Good evening. Welcome, everyone. I'm calling the October 15th regular city council meeting to order. On our agenda this evening, pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask those who'd like to join the council and myself in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Big crowd in the house tonight. That's going to be kind of fun. Under special business this evening, we have one item. It is ID 0357, and it is the proposed 2019 budget. I'll be doing a presentation this evening. Council did receive the budget on Friday. So, good evening and welcome, city council members and members of the community, both here tonight and at home. I'm excited this evening to present to you the 2019 preliminary budget for the city of Issaquah. I've intentionally prepared this preliminary budget as a maintenance budget as we await the adoption of our strategic plan in 2019. It is critical that we continue to build upon our commitment to financial stewardship as we look to align future budget decisions with community goals over the next five years. And a key piece of that work will be to directly link budget proposals to key strategic plan priorities. This year's work on the strategic plan tees up our city for that important transition as we plan next year for our 2020 budget. In this maintenance budget, I am proposing we hold the line on new initiatives until the adoption of the strategic plan. It still presents a reality-based budget. There are many competing and pressing needs that all cities consider, especially one like Issaquah, that is growing, urbanizing, and modernizing. It is critical we make wise choices on how to allocate resources. We need to take care of what we have, but we also need to find ways to pay for our growing needs. In my first year as mayor, the budget development process made it quite clear that we have two top investment priorities: people and tools. Simply put, our city delivers services to the community, and the efficiency and the effectiveness of those services depends on having the tools and resources to deliver them. Yet our staffing levels are still below where they were prior to the Great Recession in 2008, nearly 10 years ago, even though our community has grown nearly 40% since then. So, as population growth has put further pressure on demand for services, we have fewer staff to meet that demand. In other words, we are doing far more with far less. It is unsustainable without ongoing reductions in our city service levels. In addition to population growth and increased demand for services, the city has assumed infrastructure from new development and redevelopment. That infrastructure includes roads, utilities, and parks built by developers and turned over to the city. We have assumed the maintenance and operations that go along with new developments, and we have not allocated additional resources or identified increased revenues to cover these additional ongoing maintenance and operational expenses. We need to invest appropriately in order to meet these growing demands. Before I move into a deeper dive on the 2019 preliminary budget, I would like to share some exciting news with you tonight. By looking back on the projects of 2018 and the impact that they have had on neighborhood character, transportation, community engagement, and government transparency. Preserving our neighborhoods is a priority. New development codes for Central Issaquah, the Highlands, and Talis provided more prescriptive language to guide development to meet the community and the neighborhood's expectations. These new codes have provided some muscle to handle the future development and redevelopment occurring in town. We also focused on traffic calming in established neighborhoods to discourage cut-through traffic and speeding because these driving behaviors negatively impact our neighborhoods. Council also supported enhanced police enforcement to address the inappropriate driving behaviors and to take back our streets from those that speed and block intersections. Our residents also benefit from expenditures to improve Central Park and the community center, providing outstanding opportunities for recreation and enjoyment of our amazing outdoors and community facilities. We're making progress on our transportation needs. Thanks to an aggressive schedule to complete a suite of projects, including the undercrossing of I-90 and the Costco development, these roadways and trails on the north side of I-90 are scheduled to be open by January of 2019. They will provide improved local mobility options for residents and businesses, as Southeast Fourth will again connect the north and south sides of the freeway. The completion of the design, a Southeast 43rd Way intersection improvements, and the design work on two sections of our longest unapproved arterial, Newport Way, are important investments in the network. I'm excited about the work we did this year to focus on community engagement and government transparency. I think we can all be proud of the broadcasting of additional citizen board and commission meetings this year, and the fact that our staff hosted over 30 community meetings so far in 2018. Investment in technology and staffing approved last year made all of this possible. There was much more work completed and underway this year, but this short list was meant to provide an example of the positive impacts of the council investment in projects and programs approved this current year. I also want to mention two other current conditions that impact our future, and these are that first, we are still experiencing a strong local economy in a region that is growing; and second, from our city's own financial perspective, we have a healthy ending fund balance, which can be used to complete projects that add value and benefit to our community. This position gives us some latitude to think about how to use one-time resources to pay for infrastructure needs, but at the same time, we must compel ourselves to look at how to meet current and future maintenance and operational demands. It would be similar to having money in a 401K and a savings account and still needing additional income to pay a monthly mortgage or to buy a car. That's the position we find ourselves in today. So now, let's look at the financial realities we are facing. While we are stable and there is no looming financial crisis, we need to acknowledge our funding limitations and tackle them head-on. We are not meeting the challenge of funding our capital needs and our ongoing operating expenses. In a nutshell, we have a healthy cash balance account, but we do not have a plan to deal with our capital and operating funding shortfalls going forward and into the future. We see relatively moderate forecasted revenue growth in 2019, which is not keeping pace with our growing community, and poses significant challenges for our community and our city. 2019 preliminary budget does two things: plans our ongoing expenses around revenue sources and recognizes the healthy ending fund balance could also be utilized, in part to fund some limited one-time expenses. It also comes with an air of restraint and a challenge to all of us to work together in 2019 to develop strategies to address the gaps in both operating and capital expenditures and ongoing revenue sources. In light of that, I would like to outline how our budget adoption process has been determined and how resources were identified for the 2019 preliminary budget recommendations. Some aspects of this year's budget process are new. First, I submitted a budget in brief to the council and community in advance of the delivery of this preliminary budget. Second, I plan to focus presentations on those items of the 2019 preliminary budget that present material differences from the 2018 budget, including changes in personnel, significant work plan items and capital projects, as well as changes related to policy or regulatory drivers. We will be working from data produced by Questica, the new budget software approved by council in 2017. Ultimately, the software will allow us to run scenarios, report data that is tied to strategic goals, and give everybody, including community members, greater access to budget information. This new tool will help us make better informed decisions about prioritizing our investments. Third, in the next few weeks, we will discuss reauthorization of 2018 allocated funds for priority project work that was planned for completion in 2018 but will carry forward to 2019, and we will update the council on the impacts that this will have on the estimated 2018 ending fund balance. This list of reauthorized allocations may not have been as apparent in previous budget presentations. Fourth, I'm proud of the work our council ad hoc financial committee completed this year in looking into our capital funding constraints. Their work will feed into your upcoming budget deliberations this year as you discuss funding for those capital projects that were approved in the adopted capital improvement plan for 2019 but did not have identified funding sources, such as the intersection improvements at Southeast 43rd Way and Central Park in the Highlands. Preliminary budget before you tonight does not include the impacts of fully funding those projects, and as council deliberates over those preferred funding scenarios, in the next few weeks, we will need to reflect those expenditures into the 2019 preliminary budget. This will feel different since we have now moved to a two-year capital improvement plan process. Fifth, the 2019 preliminary budget is all about the numbers. In the past, we have spent a good amount of time preparing the introductory and supplementary sections, which provided community profiles and other narrative pieces. The adopted budget when published will include most of those pieces so we can have community context when it's published. With these slight modifications to the budget deliberation and adoption process, key elements will remain familiar to those who have participated in deliberations in previous years. We will answer questions from council members on any budget item, even though we will focus our presentation on items that are significant differences from the 2018 budget. We will also track proposed council adjustments to the budget using the budget deliberation spreadsheet from previous years. That will be familiar to most of those that have been part of past budget approvals. And with that, I would like to share with you the highlights of this year's budget. First, we are continuing our technology upgrades. In today's digital age, in a region that leads the evolving digital revolution, most of our residents and businesses access information through our website. Yet we have not had an upgrade since 2012. Our community has told us they want an improved, more intuitive online interface with their government, and we will be investing in those improvements this upcoming year, including a new online customer response management system. I'm particularly excited about this project. This new tool will enable our residents and customers to send us requests online, and we'll be able to tie those requests to mapping and reporting tools so that the council and community can view the information online. In addition, we will enhance our customer service practices to be in direct alignment with this new tool and to help us deliver the best possible responses. Further, we need to make it simple and convenient for our community to engage and connect business with the city. For example, our community expects to be able to complete transactions with the city electronically. To meet those expectations, I propose implementing self-service tools in both utility billing and recreation program registration. In tandem with these deeper investments in online services, we must also be responsible by investing in more advanced cybersecurity systems to protect data, infrastructure, and public funds in an age of increasing threats. Website update, online customer billing opportunities, and the investments in cybersecurity are three of the many technology investments the city anticipates implementing over the next several years to provide the community engagement and customer service the community expects. Second, I'm proposing an investment in staffing resources. The city has not kept pace with the growing service demands, and while there is a significant list of required new positions, I'm only proposing those positions this year that can be funded by the limited increase in ongoing revenues. This was probably the hardest part of my team's work this year, and I appreciate very much their cooperation as we work through the various scenarios. I propose adding five new staffing positions and converting six existing staffing positions. These staff resources will help us take care of our streets and parks, manage our budget, track and analyze our employment costs, fill our vacant positions more quickly, grow our analytical and public reporting capacities, and provide greater environmental protection. Lastly, following on the good work that has been completed this year with the approved space plan allocation for 2018, we must continue to talk about our future facility needs while maintaining the aging facilities we currently occupy. We will continue to work on our city's facilities inventory and continue the conversation that has begun this year with council on what the near-term and long-term facility plan will look like in the years ahead. We have included expenditures in this budget to maintain the facilities we have now, recognizing the council discussion is not yet complete. It should use restraint on the investments in maintenance next year while recognizing that due to the age of our facilities, we must invest to maintain operations and functionality. The facilities discussion will continue through 2019 and will require council decisions and direction prior to the development of the next capital improvement plan, which will be under development next year. Minor facility improvements proposed in this budget includes investment in our two city halls so that we can more efficiently house our staff, improve security, and address code issues. These are short-term improvements that are meant to help us get by. They do not fully satisfy our needs in these facilities. Over the course of the next several months, the council will also be asked to consider whether longer-term, higher-cost lifecycle improvements should be made to City Hall Northwest. During this year's budget presentations, city staff will also highlight significant items in their 2019 work plan. In particular, they will highlight which items include budget allocations. As the available new revenue and our current staffing levels constrain what we can afford to take on in 2019, we will also highlight projects that are needed or desired but lack a resource plan in 2019. Some other work plan items that are in the preliminary budget include: under transportation, develop a transportation-mobility master plan and continue to work on school-based transportation demand management work. Under land use, update of the old-town land use codes and continuing work with the state parks on their environmental impact study for Lake Samaish State Park. Under financial sustainability, finalize the strategic plan and its implementation framework, update our mitigation and impact fees, and complete a utility rate study. Community and the environment, develop a healthy community strategy, progress on our housing strategy development, develop wayfinding, park signage, and branding, and conduct urban forest and green Issaquah planning. And again, facilities, develop a long-term municipal facilities plan and costing. There is much more in the preliminary budget for you to discuss and deliberate than the highlights I mentioned, but I wanted to touch on some of the high notes before moving to a couple of other items related to this year's budget. First, I want to point out that we are not yet complete with our ongoing move to better cost allocation. Last year, council reviewed a first important step, which was creation of the new IT fund. Cost allocation is required under state law and is a best practice to ensure charges between funds and departments are justified. While this preliminary budget does not contain any new cost allocation methodologies this year, we do anticipate that next year we will conduct a review of our fleet fund and potentially other areas of operation to ensure we have appropriate cost allocation methods. Second, during budget deliberations, we also prepared to make an important recommendation regarding another city program, operations of the senior center. It is time that we move out of the interim operations of the senior center. Those who use that facility most have expressed a desire to see some stability in place and have shared their satisfaction with how city staff has been operating their programs since taking over. To accomplish this, I recommend that city council direct staff to install a long-term city-run operational plan for the senior center. This addition will need to be added to the 2019 preliminary budget, and staff is prepared to show a new revenue and expenditure plan that would implement this important policy decision. To accomplish all of these goals and prepare us for the future, our 2019 preliminary budget includes a 3.47% increase in revenue and a less than 1% increase in expenditures over the revised budget for 2018. The 2019 preliminary budget does not require any utilization of the general fund reserves. 2018 ended with an unaudited underexpenditure of $4.4 million, which returns to our fund balance and is available for one-time expenses or to carry over as funding in 2019 for incomplete and prioritized 2018 projects. Currently, our estimated ending fund balance exceeds the maximum range council established in our financial management policies. Our policies enable city council to utilize extra fund balance for certain types of expenditures. I am recommending that the council discuss during budget deliberations and throughout 2019 its priorities for use of the fund balance. In addition to capital and one-time projects, council could consider establishing a practice of transferring a portion of the balance into capital funds or making startup funding for new initiatives, such as a neighborhood grant program. These one-time uses of the fund balances have historical precedent in Issaquah and are ways many cities across the country utilize excess reserve funds to create added value for their communities. The return to fund balance is the result of a number of factors, which we will discuss and greater deal with city council during the upcoming budget sessions, but I will provide a brief summary for you tonight. Nearly half of the amount is due to personnel cost savings resulting from vacancies. We have much work to do in reducing the time to fill vacancies, and will provide council with more detail during our budget discussion in the next two months about how we will improve on this front. Our ability to fill positions in an expeditious manner has a direct and consequential impact on our ability to complete our work. During the remainder of the year, I anticipate the council will continue with community and partnership discussions on projects or proposals that have not yet been thoroughly scoped or framed up, including transit-oriented development and open space acquisitions, and may consider potentially using fund balance reserves to pay for those at the appropriate time next year. There is just not enough information or certainty on any of those opportunities to include them in the 2019 preliminary budget before you. However, this does not mean that council cannot act on them during 2019. We just need to be mindful that these proposals are in progress and could come forward after the approval of this budget. We do have opportunities to invest in these new and exciting proposals. So, as you explore the details of the 2019 preliminary budget and the totals presented this evening, there are a few items I want to call to your attention that will tee up the 2020 budget work as we continue to work to link our budget process to our community priorities and to adjust our financial approach to include the long-term impacts of our current funding choices. Impact of the strategic plan. In 2019, we will adopt our first-ever citywide strategic plan, and we will build a framework that connects the plan to the 2020 budget and to the capital improvement plan, developing performance metrics and tools that will help us monitor and report progress. I was not able to do that linkage this year with the 2019 preliminary budget, and I'm very much looking forward to this step next year. Cost allocation. We will continue to update cost allocation methods to ensure right-sized charges are being made in the right places and that our funding models are sustainable in the long term. Budgeting process improvements. In 2019, we will continue with our budget process improvements as we begin to use our Questica budget tool in new ways, allowing council and the public to have online access to financial information in time for the 2020 budget discussions. Developing our long-term funding strategies for operations and capital projects. In addition, the ad hoc financial committee's work plan items for next year will include discussion of how to enhance the city's ability to maintain service levels and infrastructure when current revenue sources do not keep pace with service demands and costs. Also, ad hoc will need to continue the discussion of a long-term funding strategy for capital improvements that goes beyond just the funding of transportation projects and includes other capital investments in parks, open space, community, and municipal facilities. Community's number-one priority. And lastly, because it is a top community issue, next year's transportation efforts will mark a significant step forward for our community. We filled the senior transportation planner position in September. Thank you very much for approving this critically important position. This position is required to successfully launch the transportation advisory board and the work on the mobility master plan. We will soon make our final recruitment for board members, and we have already selected the firm that will assist us with creating the plan. I say this in my address tonight because, as I have said earlier, I have presented a budget that is restrained in its use of ending fund balance surpluses, even though the balance is in excess of our recommended maximum. As mayor, I am strongly supportive of expending some of the balance on one-time expenditures, but our priority needs to be the community's number-one priority, and that is focusing on traffic and transportation. Our community throughout the strategic plan process and years before have asked us to deal with these impacts, to use local control to improve the reality on the ground. It's going to be hard, and it's going to require commitment and boldness, and I know that we can do this together. I'd like to conclude this evening by reminding council that we are in a very good position to move forward with our multi-year overhaul of the budgeting process and efforts to develop a long-range funding strategy. I'm excited about our future and the many ways that we will be able to address our challenges and opportunities as a growing, vibrant, diverse, and extremely beautiful community, a natural treasure at the edge of a growing urban community. You have all received my 2019 preliminary budget in electronic or hard copy this evening, and I see many good nights of intriguing reading there for you, to be sure. I am looking forward to your questions and comments at our first budget session on October 22nd, and I wanted to thank you for your time and attention tonight. And I'm going to go a little off-script. In case you were not aware, we have a lot of our directors here tonight in support of the budget message coming out, but I also wanted to make a special thank you to our finance team, who has been working very hard over many months to get this done, and so if they would raise their hands so the council can see who they are. We have with us tonight from finance Ruth Riddle, Heidi Nagler, Christina Reller, and Kim Holben. Ladies, thank you very much. Thank you for the applause, but it's okay if you don't clap too, because it is our business meeting, but thank you. That was very nice. The next item on the agenda this evening is audience comments. So, audience members may address the council at this time, and the guidelines for public participation will be placed up on the screen. If you've signed up to make public comments tonight, we'll call upon you first, and if you did not sign up, don't worry, because before we close it out, I will check in to see if anybody would like to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up. Please keep your comments to three minutes this evening. We have a lot of folks in the audience. If you're here as part of a group, if you can identify a spokesperson for your group, that would be fabulous. And anybody that's in our audience this evening that would like to show support of a speaker's comments, please do so by raising your hand so council can see the level of support for the speaker's comments. There's also a public hearing tonight on AB 7635, vacation of a portion of Northeast Gilman Boulevard, and if you would like to make comments on that topic, you'll have an opportunity later in the meeting. Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name is Ken Easman. I live at 2473 Northwest Stony Creek Drive. I'm a resident of the city of Issaquah and live on Cougar Mountain. And this evening, I'm speaking on behalf of the Save Cougar Mountain organization. So first off, I want to thank the city council for resolution AB 7662 of August 6th of this year. Your resolution and your supportive comments mean the world to us and all of the supporters of Save Cougar Mountain. I'd also like to thank Mayor Pauli and Parks Director Watling for their continued leadership and ownership of the project to acquire this property and save it from development. So I'd like to give an update on Save Cougar Mountain activities. In addition to your unanimous support via the resolution of August 6th, we've been working hard with the state and county representatives, as well as several nonprofits. And we're most proud of the fact that we've got 2,596 signatures on the petition to Save Cougar Mountain, an amount that increases virtually every day. So budget time is here. We'd like to encourage city council to keep the Bergsma acquisition... We'd like to encourage city council to keep the Bergsma acquisition foremost on your minds as you work the next budget cycle. Please remember your resolution of August 6th and these supportive words. We recognize that this acquisition may have its challenges, but there is wide support and help to be had. We've got partners at the state and county level and the nonprofits. We'll have development fees for parks flow every time another new housing unit is built in the city. And there's long-term benefit from saving this property, so please consider long-term debt as an option. We ask you to stay committed and get creative and get the job done. You have a choice. The acquisition of this land has lasting benefit now and in the future. It reflects the will of the residents of Issaquah and our expectations of saving one of the most important features of our community, our Issaquah Alps. So in summary, let's get it done, and I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ken. There's a lot of hands of support going up for Ken and Save Cougar Mountain. Next on the signup list?
Julie Clark.
Good evening, Mayor Polly and city council members. My name is Julie Clark. I live at 915 Bear Ridge Court Northwest. This evening, I, along with Jerry Potter and Liz Taylor, represent Save Cougar Mountain. Our petition currently has one more than what Ken had shown earlier, 2,597 signatures. And while there are not close to 2,600 people here in the council chambers tonight, we know that 2,597 signatures is an amount that is difficult to comprehend, so we thought we would help you with the visual. We have a scroll which includes the names of these supporters, and it's 84 feet long. For reference, the front row of this audience section seating here is 21 feet wide, so the scroll is four times that length. While Jerry and Liz are presenting our scroll, I would like to share a few of the comments people have posted on our petition. Back in June, Medei wrote, "I feel so sad every time I look at the newly constructed apartments on I-90, exit 15. It's making the view so ugly. Let's not make this happen to our gorgeous Cougar Mountain, and let's do our best to preserve its wild beauty for future generations." In July, Jane wrote, "Not every piece of pristine land should be developed, and this is one of those areas. Save it for our children and our children's children. Save Cougar Mountain from unnecessary destabilization. Woodland vistas and recreational areas for urban and suburban residents provide sorely needed respite from the stress created by our high-tech and man-made environment." And Alex wrote, "I fully support this petition as a frequent user of the trail. While I support finding more ways to construct housing for new residents, this area should be preserved, given its unique nature and placement." In August, Joyce shared, "I have hiked this area many times, and am always enchanted by the beauty so close to a major metropolitan area. Please preserve this natural asset for future generations." Alyssa said, "My group likes hiking on this mountain as much as we can. Please keep it preserved." We, the Save Cougar Mountain representatives, ask that you please think of the voices of these 2,597 people while you are working on the city's budget, and consider each person supporting this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I just had one question for you. Are you leaving that with us or taking it?
We were going to take it, but we can submit those.
It's completely up to you. If you think you have another use for it and you want to keep it, that's fine.
We may. Thank you.
And who has signed up next, Tisha?
Janet Dobrowski.
Lots of hands up in the air. I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yes, Janet Dobrowski.
My name is Janet Dobrowski, and I live on 21003 Southeast 155th Place, Renton, Washington. I live in the Maple Hills area, and I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed comprehensive plan that Solid Waste has put forth. They have recommended to expand the existing Cedar Hills landfill. We recently had a town meeting with Reagan Dunn, and Mr. Ramos was in attendance there, and there were over 200 people there that were in opposition of the expansion of the landfill for various reasons. And I would, apparently, the process is for the King County Council to vote on it. If they approve it, then it goes to the cities. So I'm here to kind of educate or let you know that the document that the Solid Waste put out is full of false, I wouldn't say falsehood, misleading statements, and their primary objective was to expand the landfill. They had two other alternatives that the documents show some exaggeration of costs, and it's just very misleading. They cherry-picked some numbers. And I would really encourage you, if it gets to the point where the cities have to vote on it, I encourage you to do your own research. Do not take this document at face value. The landfill lies, the Solid Waste, you know, I hate to say it, but they lie. They have gone to the extent of violating a settlement agreement, a lawsuit settlement agreement, in order to advance their objective, which is to expand the landfill. They have misrepresented the waste-to-energy idea that it's worse in greenhouse gases than the landfill. It's totally the opposite. All you have to do is research Europe. I'm not proposing, I'm for the waste-to-energy, and a vote that was taken at this, 200 people said, about three-quarters of them said, they would be happy to have a waste-to-energy plant at the landfill rather than having the landfill. They want it closed, and it needs to be closed, because the other thing that was important that I think was important for the Issaquah people, there was a report issued on a water issue at the Cedar Hills landfill, and it stated that because the unlined areas of the landfill, for 20 years, they put garbage in to unlined pits, that the aquifer under Cedar Hills will be contaminated by 2058 from that leachate from that landfill. So again, I just urge you to do your own research. Don't believe everything Solid Waste tells you. It's rosy pictures.
Thank you, Janet. Do you want to leave your comments with the city clerk for the record or not? Up to you.
There's lots of notes on them.
Okay.
I would be happy to give her what I have. I also would like to say that we have a website, Stop.
Janet, they won't be able to hear you, you have your time, but if you come to the microphone and just state the website, that would be great.
We have a website called StopLandfillExpansion.org, and it gives a lot of alternatives. It's not advocating for waste-to-energy, but it gives you some research data that you can look at.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Tisha, next on the list?
No one further has signed up.
Looking to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address council this evening. I see a gentleman in the back. If you'd like to come up, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Philip Schmidt-Potmann. I live at 12623 Southeast 83rd Court in Newcastle. First of all, it's kind of interesting about, almost a little over 30 years ago, as an exchange student at Issaquah High School, from Germany.
You get to start over.
All right.
Bonus time.
Hope that doesn't. And I'm picking up on the same topic that Janet just talked about. I've been doing this for 20 years now, working on the solid waste issue here in King County. And I was sat on the solid waste advisory board for eight years, and many of the comments were just blown off in the wind. I've seen how the solid waste division, who was, I believe, already presented to you and trying to make their case, how they really don't care about anything else but landfilling. We have had international experts that have reviewed the solid waste management plan. The feedback was basically that everything is landfill-based here, and really in the rest of the world, the opposite is the case. So we urge you to, actually, Janet said it kind of nicely, I would be more direct, saying to basically refuse that solid waste plan, do not approve it. There's so much more to be said, and I have something here. I don't want to read all of it, I just want to give you a couple of ideas. I leave something here with the clerk, too, so you can review that. There's a lot more information, if you'd like, get back to me on this one. So, I mean, on the educational curve, I think a lot of stuff is needed that hasn't taken place. For just a consideration, the whole country of Germany, landfills, right now, about 200,000 tons are pretreated for over 80 million people. In King County, we land for five times that much for 2 million people, yet they have the most elaborate, developed recycling system anywhere in the world. Yes, they do use waste-to-energy, too, but it's a very minimal impact to anything. It's a part of an integrated solid waste management system, and the whole system doesn't cost the average German citizen anything more than the average King County residents. It's also not subsidized by any taxes or anything like that. So if we engage in an integrated system based on recycling, upcycling, building a better collection system, and everything else that you can think about, including waste-to-energy, which delivers at least energy, reduces greenhouse gases, recovers metals, nonferrous glass, and so on, there are a lot of things to be said about that. And I just leave a statement here that we did, and we left it, I just adjusted it to the council here, but we left this also with the King County Council. We have made also requests to the King County Council that they look at, I was part of that study team that did the waste-to-energy study for King County, and we need to consider, or not consider, we need to pursue the 27 recommendations that we gave, which was looking at greenhouse gas modeling from international model basis. We need to look at it from, you know, all the different areas are listed, like recycling and so on, so I urge you to look at that, and I'll leave this with you, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. If you just might bring it up for the clerk, that'd be great. I see Brenda Hevering.
Good evening, Mayor Polly and council. I'm Brenda DeVore. I live at 835 Wildwood Boulevard Southwest in Issaquah, and I'm here representing myself as a resident tonight, but also as the community engagement and events manager of the chamber. And we just came off of our 49th Salmon Days, so we've recovered. We're excited for the next one coming up. It's going to be our 50th year, and we're already in the planning stages, but we want to come back and just say thank you so much for your ongoing support so that we can continue to bring this festival to our town. And we just really thank you, and being on a planning side this year, I have to say I was completely blown away by the amount of community it takes to put this together. So thank you again for supporting that, and we look forward to bringing you a really fantastic event next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone else wishing to address this evening? Yeah, actually, Tisha, for you. Oh, are you waiting? Actually, if your comments are related to the vacation of the land, you can wait. If they're related to any other agenda item this evening, you should take this opportunity to speak. And then I see Steve in line over there, too.
So I'd like to comment on the agenda item on the Issaquah School District impact fees that you have this evening. In the outline that is handed out, there are four key points that I want to make. First of all, the school district does an excellent job on education. My wife and I had a son and daughter that went through the South End schools and couldn't be happier as parents. But when it comes to impact fees, the district has been deficient for at least 20 years. And the result of that deficiency, essentially charging less than they were authorized to charge every year, has transferred a large amount of wealth from family and business taxpayers in the district to development and building company profits. The city has, Issaquah has the authority to end this deficiency now, so we're not in the same position 20 years from now of not knowing how many tens of millions or hundreds of millions of dollars have been lost through this process. So I'd like to elaborate on some of those points. First of all, the King County ordinance doesn't give the school district the latitude to decide what parts of the impact fee formula it uses and doesn't use. The ordinance states that the district shall use the formula that's provided as an attachment to the enabling ordinance. In your committee report, you'll see that Issaquah School District has used specific parts of the formula as specified, but when it comes to dividing the unfunded need by two, they're apparently saying that, well, that's not a technical requirement. We can deviate from that in order to lessen the costs of housing projects and keep developers building more in the district than they might be able to otherwise. Some points on that. The ordinance formula is just explicit, as explicit about dividing by two as it is on all other stages of the calculation. Nothing in the ordinance gives the Issaquah School District the right to select what parts of the formula they will use and not use. And in terms of helping development industry, their job is education, not taking care of developers and builders and their markets. The ISD has a belief that by discounting the fee further than it has to be...
If you want to take a few seconds and sum up, Bill, that would be great.
Okay. They're wrong in this assumption. They could impact the costs or the price of homes if developers were cost-plus contractors, as some businesses do with government, but the development and building industries are for-profit corporations. They're mandated by shareholders to maximize profits. If you give them a $10,000 break on an impact fee or any other aspect of their costs, it doesn't get passed along in lower price.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, if you'd like to come up. And there are some hands in support in the audience.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Polly, city council. Good to be here again, Steve Purrera, Old Town Issaquah for about 10 years. So I'll add, I think Salmon Days was well-done, so good job to all those involved. Moving quickly since I only have three minutes. Item E on the consent calendar, I'm sorry, item D on consent calendar. I like the idea for the levy and public sources, but I disagree with the designated official. I think that should be the mayor, I think that should be the city council in charge of funds. I don't think that should be the designated position, so I would like to see that reworked before it gets approved. Just briefly, item E, AB 7643, we've gone from a 65% permeable surface to a 90% permeable surface. I don't see that change that was recommended. I don't think I was in accord with what the city council approved when they brought forward a removing of the central Issaquah plan, so I'd like to see that revert back. So I guess last issue, I just want to touch briefly on the budget. It seems like there were two issues that were brought forward in 2017. One was $100,000 for Old Town calming traffic and a $100,000 proposal for a dog park. When I looked at the figures, it turned out there was $340,000 for the Old Town calming that was... That was, I think, a good thing and the right thing to do. I kind of see the same thing maybe happening with the dog park. One of those that I'd say I disagree with the dog park, but I don't think it's the paramount issue. We keep finding these new things to do. We need to look at our budget and decide what we're not going to do. This seems like a prime example. I want to be clear, though, while I'm opposed to the dog park, I'm thinking of, as an example of how we're doing our budgeting priorities and setting priorities and scoping out, we always find more things to do, and we're not meeting those core competencies that I think Issaquah is saying that we want to have. So I would like to see that reworked. I know, for example, I would be one of those who would say, let's get rid of this Central Park pad, number one, but I know we get into this conversation of everybody fights what they want, and we all come forward and we say, I want these things, I want these things. That's what people do, we come and say we want more, and we want you to give us those So another example of that, I think, is the, it's actually item number E, I'm sorry, item I, the traffic calming enforcement. A lot of the survey questions deal with the issues because the city streets are too wide, there's too many pass-through traffic. The issue is just pretty core and simple. People are speeding, they're blaming it on other things. We expand our scope to be more than just what it should be and what it is. So I would like your help in kind of narrowing the focus to what those things are and should be with that. I'm sure my three minutes is about up, so I'll save...
So you probably noticed we never set the timer, but yes. iPhone says three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you all.
Steve, David?
Thank you, David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Not many people here remember the era of when they tried to put the incinerator above the gravel pits. And we'll see, incineration has improved tremendously since those days, but I'm not sure it's the right thing. But let's get a good discussion on it. Just want to address a couple of the partners the city is working with, the Trust for Public Land in King County, having to do with a potential acquisition. Trust for Public Land was involved in acquisitions in Issaquah in the '70s and '80s. And in 1990, when we did the five-day Mountain Sound March, the Issaquah Trail Club did, we were broke, and fortunately, Jim Ellis and others had the vision that we got something big here, let's go with it. And it was Trust for Public Land that came in with office space and staffing to get the Mountain Sound Greenway going. So they've been a great partner, and of course, Margaret's Way, they were the buyer of that property, which then the county bought from them. Our other great partner is King County. King County from this, the whole basin, Issaquah Basin, has been vastly improved by King County, starting at the head of the basin, the Taylor Mountain County Forest, which is really a county park, but it's a forest and managed well. And then they've made many acquisitions all through the corridor, right down here to the west side and east side of Squawk Mountain. King County has made major acquisitions that allow us to go from Lake Samamish to Squawk Mountain. There's still some gaps they're working on, we're working on, but it's been to their, they've led that in many cases. King County did the Newcastle Plan, which gave the vision and it got the people thinking that an urban village was okay. The first one didn't happen in the Newcastle Planning Area, it happened up here in Issaquah Highlands. And that was county leadership, along with the city, very important to make that work. So we got great partners, they've done a lot for us, let's help them out. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And lots of hands up in the audience. Would anybody else care to address council this evening? And I see a hand up. One up.
Hi, I'm Mindy Person. I live at 23847 Southeast 59th Street, just off of Old Black Nugget Road. We also own a property at 235 Northeast Juniper Street, which is within the intensive commercial, which is AB 7643, which is item F on the consent calendar. Wasn't going to speak tonight, but I heard somebody that was against the 65, or wanted to go back to the 65%, and I just want to say that I, we are so appreciative, all of us that attended those commission meetings, of the commission and of Keith Niven for listening to us, because we're a small business, and frankly, between my husband and I, we own three small businesses in Issaquah. My husband has the biggest one, he employs 20 people here in the city of Issaquah. And we put our life savings into buying that property on Juniper. I mean, not entire, but, you know, you get that. And if you reduce the use of that property by 25%, that's 25% of our nest egg that just goes away. So we are for the proposition, as has been put to you, to refer to the Land and Shore Committee, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Seeing none, a second call, anyone wishing to address council? Last call for anyone wishing to address council tonight. Seeing no hands, that ends audience comments. Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate all the information that you share with us. Save Cougar Mountains request for property acquisition, comments on the school district impact fee, comments on King County Solid Waste Management Plan update, the successful Salmon Days event from last weekend, and also the last speaker in support of the new standards. So thank you very much for coming. We will move on to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Resource Management Committee on Thursday, October 11th. There were two main items for action that the committee made recommendations on. The first item was replacement of a barrier near Lake Taps Tunnel intake. This would be a $58,000 cost and would be out of their current budget, and is a barrier that's required for safety reasons. And then also replacement of a forklift, which we, $48,000, and also, it was an anticipated equipment cost. And then we also had a discussion around water quality monitoring. And this would be a, this would be a water quality system that would monitor the quality of water in Lake Taps, and the main question here is how do we assess and manage water quality from a recreational perspective until it is used, or until which time it may be used as a water supply, as it is a reservoir. The Cascade Water Alliance Board will meet October 24th at 3:30 at Cascade Office in Bellevue, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Services and Safety Committee met on October 9th. The agenda included a presentation from Imagine Housing related to issues arising from their Rosecrest property in Tallis. Imagine Housing CEO Valette Nolan provided a presentation on the underlying challenges at Rosecrest and the steps that Imagine Housing has been taking to improve communications and resident satisfaction. The committee was satisfied with the steps that Imagine Housing has taken. This was a presentation that was requested by full council that Services and Safety meet with Imagine Housing to talk about the Rosecrest situation. Not related to our last Services and Safety Committee, but tonight, Agenda Bill 7655, Expedited Traffic Enforcement Pilot Project Summary Report, an extension, is on our consent agenda. This was reviewed by Services and Safety at our September 18th meeting. The committee recommended that the pilot be extended through the end of 2018, as the results from the pilot were showing promises in terms of modifying driving behavior in the city. The administration has indicated that the pilot can be extended using existing police department budget, and that no additional funding will be required. This agenda bill is on tonight's consent agenda to extend the pilot through the end of the year. The next meeting of the Services and Safety Committee will be on November 14th at 6:30 PM in council chambers. Services and Safety Committee meeting was moved from our normal Tuesday meeting to Wednesday to accommodate the city council budget work session that is scheduled for November 13th. So just note, everyone, a schedule change. The agenda for the meeting has not yet been set. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board met on October 11th. The agenda included the board approving replacement of their existing HRA with a voluntary employee beneficiary association health reimbursement arrangement managed by a third-party administrator. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board also adopted the 2019-2020 Revenue and Expense Budget. This budget was aligned to the presentation presented by Eastside Fire and Rescue Chief Jeff Clark at the council's October 8th work session. The board also amended Administrative Policy 0002 Budget Management and Reserve Policy to provide for a smoothing of increases in annual contributions to Eastside Fire and Rescue. The smoothing approach was presented by Chief Clark at the October 8th work session. And finally, the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board amended Administrative Policy 0004 Minimum Staffing to provide for revised staffing plan for Station 81, to make this an aid-car-only station. This will permit Eastside Fire and Rescue to provide better response times to other parts of the service area. And this, too, was discussed by Chief Clark at the October 8th meeting. The next meeting of Eastside Fire and Rescue Board will be on November 8th at Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters, and that concludes my very lengthy report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you. The Council Infrastructure Committee will be meeting this Thursday, the 18th, right here in council chambers at 6:30. We have three action items on the agenda. AB 7649, which is amendments to the water sewer and stormwater recovery contracts. AB 7647, amendments to the general facility charge and regional supply and treatment charge for water. And AB 7635, vacation of a portion of the northeast Gilman Boulevard, which there'll be a public hearing for this shortly. Those are the three action items, and of course, project updates. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. On October 4th, GMPB met, but because I was unable to attend, I do not have a report. They will meet again on Thursday, November 1st at 10:00 AM at PSC headquarters in Seattle, and I'll report on both the October and November meetings at the next opportunity. And the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee has not met since our last council meeting, so I have nothing to report there either.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. The Issaquah City Council's Land and Shore Committee will met on October 4th, and we had three items. The first was, we were presented with this 2017 Central Issaquah Monitoring Report and Dashboard. So should you be interested in reviewing that, it's on the city's website. Agenda Bill 7326, Old Town Subarea Plan, the committee would like to take another look, so it's on the consent agenda tonight, to be referred back to Land and Shore because it was scheduled to come to full council, and the committee didn't think we were quite ready yet. But for technical reasons, it needs to be referred back, if that's, if the committee wants to take another look. Also, Agenda Bill 7661, which is on the consent agenda tonight. Agenda Bill, let's see, Proposed Amendments to Central Standards, Table 4.3B, permitted land uses, and that was recommended to adopt from the committee. Our next meeting is November 1st, here in council chambers at 6:30. The agenda has not yet been set. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Deputy Council President Batis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, October 10th, 7:00 PM in the Renton City Hall. There were a couple items that I want to draw your attention to. The first is that there was a conversation about the 2019 SCA legislative agenda, which we've talked about. I would say there was a robust conversation around people who wanted to amend the legislative agenda, and a robust counter-conversation amongst people who wanted to leave it as it was, simplicity being a virtue. So there's going to be a further conversation down the road. I think it might be at the business meeting for SCA, but where people are going to make potential amendments to it. I indicated that our council thought that the sort of simplicity of it, and the fact that it dovetailed well with our own legislative agenda, was important. I don't know how many amendments would potentially get much traction, but, you know, lots of cities had lots of things they were interested in, and as I have often said, a camel is a horse designed by committee. So we'll see where that goes. A second issue that I have just forwarded you information on is there was a presentation on a Regional Affordable Housing Task Force Draft Plan. So I have sent it all on to you for you to take a look at, and what I would like to do is bring it up again, and for good of the order. I will also, as soon as the minutes are available from the SCA pick meeting, I will forward those as well, because I would say that there was also an extremely robust conversation around this plan. And I will leave it at that, and I will let you take a look at the gist of that conversation, and then, like I said, potentially get your thoughts on this plan, or will ask for your thoughts on this plan at the next, for good of the order, at the next regular city council meeting. I will mention that SCA appointments are the end of this month, and so Mayor Pauli has sent out a request from everybody for their preferences, for what they would like to have names to be submitted from the city to SCA. Executive Director Dawson has made it clear that she expects cities to sort of get their own house in order collectively, and send sort of one set of recommendations and requests, and that also, these, you know, people have requests on what they would like to get. Hopefully, you know, hopefully they'll be able to have those names submitted. We may also, as part of the discussions of dovetailing this to our regional priorities, ask you to consider additional appointments as things go forward. So we shall see how that goes. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Martz. And that completes the committee and regional reports. Moving on to the mayor's report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss items related to pending litigation per 42.30.110 per N1 per N.I. These items are expected to, is that, have I got that right? End potential property acquisition. These items are expected to last at least 20 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. Mayor's Month of Concern. City staff donated time at local grocers and also collected our own food donations in September for the mayor's month of concern for the hungry. This is a benefit for the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. We dropped off 712 pounds of food, more than doubled last year's record, giving us a new donation record for the city. Regionally, the Food and Clothing Bank received 23,292 pounds of food and toiletries, that's 11.65 tons of goods. I also wanted to talk a little bit about Salmon Days, and appreciated that Brenda from the chamber came tonight to tell you of success. We estimate that approximately 130,000 festival-loving friends came to attend this year. There were 80 entries in the parade, 70 local nonprofits had fundraising activities during the festival. Our local Issaquah robotics team added new and exciting activities to the field of fun. We had 34 farmers market vendors and 55 food vendors, 298 artists, 14 wineries in the new wine tasting area, 932 paid attendees of the carnival over at Issaquah Elementary, Issaquah Valley Elementary, and 50 sponsors who contributed over $300,000 to the event. This event takes 477 volunteers over the three days to run. It's quite an event to pull off. I want to thank the city's parks and recreation department, police department, and all the city staff, along with Eastside Fire and Rescue, who worked on this chamber event with all of these amazing sponsors and volunteers. The last item in the mayor's report today is a little update on the 62nd Street project. Cannot wait for this to open. I toured this project on Friday, October 5th, and was thrilled to see the progress. A few of the highlights, Pickering Trail from Fourth to Pickering Barn is already open to the public. The bridge construction is completed, and they are doing ongoing finish work on the structure. The King County Trail undercrossing structure is built, and not only looks really cool, but provides separation of the trail users from the roundabout. And the numerous utilities in the area have all been reconstructed and are just waiting final approval. Contractor is currently working six 10-hour days each week to try and get the road bridge and King County Eastlake Samamish Trail open by the end of the year, so we can get this critically important undercrossing reopened. So thank you for being patient. I also just wanted to add on a little update on the Bergsma property, since we had so many members of the public this evening show up from the Save Cougar Mountain group. We are still partnering with the Trust for Public Land and exploring the acquisition options for this parcel known as Bergsma property. It's a very complex opportunity, and it will take multiple solutions. I had reported earlier in the summer that there was an option to purchase agreement that TPL had attained from the owner, and that agreement allowed for an appraisal of the property to be initiated. While the appraisal work was underway, and now has been underway and is now nearing completion, the city and the Trust for Public Lands have continued to identify and explore numerous rendering opportunities that would be needed for any acquisition scenario. And specific details of the work cannot be publicly shared tonight, however, we are hopeful that we will be able to share details of this work publicly in the coming month or two, should an acquisition be negotiated. So thank you for being patient. So thank you for being patient. In proceeding to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Councilmember Hunt.
I would like to move down item J, AB 7661, Proposed Amendments to Central Standards, Table 4.3b, permitted land uses.
Second.
I don't, I think she's good.
Oh, all right. Well.
I think that's one of the few things that don't need to be seconded, but thank you, Council President Marts. So we will put that on our regular agenda after item A, AB 7640, so that will be our new item B. Under, this is, oh, it says motion made and seconded, so maybe it did need to be seconded. Do we need to? Okay, nope, mistake. Take that out.
I'm glad I'm not the only person.
You're not. There's a lot of confusion going around. Okay. The next item on our agenda, whoa, whoa, sorry.
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the consent calendar as listed in this evening's published agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go's? Ares. Next item now on our agenda is public hearing, AB 7635, vacation of a portion of northeast Gilman Boulevard. We're going to conduct the public hearing, and this has been, this will be referred to Council Infrastructure. I'd like to invite Senior Engineer John Mortenson to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Good evening, everyone. I'm John Mortenson, Senior Transportation Engineer in the Public Works Engineering Department. Tonight, I'm here to give you a brief presentation on Agenda Bill 7635, vacation of a portion of northeast Gilman Boulevard. Before I get into the details of this agenda bill, just in case anyone doesn't know, so right-of-way is an easement for the traveling public, and city code and state law allow a public agency like the city of Issaquah to vacate right-of-way, which extinguishes that easement for the public right-of-way. When that happens, the right-of-way becomes under the sole control of the adjacent property State law and city code also allow for an abutting property owner to petition for a right-of-way vacation and ask for council approval. City council could also initiate the right-of-way vacation process if the, a council chose to, in order to reuse the public burden if there's no need for the right-of-way. So specifically about this agenda bill, the right-of-way that is being considered to be vacated is shown on the map in yellow. The adjacent property to the south is owned by Kyle Development, and it's shown in blue. To the north and to the east is the right-of-way for Interstate 90. If the city council decides to vacate the right-of-way, the city will receive just compensation for the value of the land. Now, if you feel like you're having a moment of deja vu, you are. And the reason for that is, last spring, the city council considered vacating this property. At the time, there was a lot of public comments about the future use of this property, and the council decided to vote one to four after deliberations, and wait till after the park strategic plan was adopted. Since that time, the 2008 Park Strategic Plan was adopted in last summer. Also, if you remember from when this agenda bill was presented last spring, both the city and state will maintain an easement for the city underground utilities and for Washdot to maintain their retaining wall. This is a picture looking northwest on Gilman Boulevard. And as I said earlier, right-of-way is an easement for traveling public, and at one time, there were multiple property owners along this section of Gilman Boulevard. Right now, there's only one property owner, and that's Kyle Development, that they've consolidated all the properties. And so this public right-of-way basically functions like a private driveway, except the city still has the burden of ongoing maintenance and liabilities and risks. I went out there last week and just kind of took a look around. The sidewalks are really cracked, the, it doesn't meet the current ADA standards, the driveway slopes are too steep, the mailbox would prevent a wheelchair from getting by. So there's some maintenance needs and ongoing liabilities out there with this right-of-way that we're talking about. Here's another picture, and this is looking east onto the property. On the left, you can see the retaining wall for I-90, and as I was standing out there last week, I was observed that it's really loud with the traffic from I-90 going by. Tonight's recommended motion is to refer Agenda Bill 7635 to this Thursday's Council Infrastructure Committee for review and recommendation. That way, we can respond to any comments or questions that are brought up tonight, and bring the agenda bill back to the full council on November 5th for final action. The agenda bill from last spring was Agenda Bill 7485. And that was to vacate a portion of, the same portion of Gilman Boulevard. At the public hearing, it began on March 19th, and that, Sam Kyle from Kyle Development, gave a presentation. He gave a history of the right-of-way as, of Gilman Boulevard as I-90 was developed. And then on April 2nd, there were several comments about, mostly concerning future use. And in the end, as I mentioned, the council voted one to four, and one to wait until the strategic plan was completed. So some more detail about the, the public comments. The overall theme was wait to make sure that we don't have a future use for that right-of-way. And there were a bunch of ideas suggested, like movies on I-90, a festival street, maybe it could be a community amenity, what about the, could be a trail connecting over to High Point, and some concerns about future rezoning. On July 16th, the council adopted the state, or the, the park strategic plan, and it did not identify a future park or trail in this section of northeast Gilman Boulevard. Talking a little bit about some of the specific comments that were brought up, a couple of the big problems is, if we convert it to a park-type facility, whether it's for movies or a festival street or anything like that, or linear park, that it cuts off the primary access to this property. And another thing is, it's, this is just my personal opinion, not a very pleasant place to be with all the noise from I-90 whizzing by. It'd be really hard to hear a movie. And so then, talking specifically about the Green Necklace, or maybe a trail over to High Point Trail, well, this Green Necklace Plan did not identify a connection in this area. Same impact as doing a park, that if we put a trail there, that we're going to be cutting off access to the private property. And continuing along, the trail would have to primarily be in Washdot's limited access area, and there's a lot of environmentally sensitive areas as the East Fork of Issaquah Creek goes through there. Final comment that I remember from last spring was potential rezoning. So I talked to the city's long-range planning manager, and she said that there shouldn't be a change in use out there, and that current uses, I'm not going to read through the table, but those are what the uses of the land if Kyle Development were to redevelop the property. And tonight's recommendation, it's to, like I said, to refer it to the Council Infrastructure Committee, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, John. Councilmember questions? If there's no questions, I can open the hearing, but I'll look one more time. No questions for John? So I now open the public hearing at 8:22. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No.
Is there anyone who would like to address the council during the public hearing?
Hello again, Mayor Polly, City Council. Good to be here again. So I live off 170 Northeast Dogwood Street, which is not too far from this complex. Several thoughts occurred to me on this. I guess I'm opposed to the idea of vacating the property. My reasons are as follows. As the previous speaker said, this is a primary access for that property, so it's a primary ingress, degress for cars going to that business park. There are only two of those, and you're cutting off one of them, so that seems like bad traffic management, bad emergency access policy. The other is that complex is at least zoned or planned to be zoned as part of the Old Town Issaquah Plan. It doesn't seem to meet the character of that area, so allowing more growth in there, I guess I'd like to see that area moved or not included as part of the Old Town Issaquah Plan area, but it's not consistent with the area, and it's not maybe consistent with the State Route 10 going through there. For that reason, I guess I have concerns and reservations about traffic already being impacted with what's taking place now, so thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing? Second call. Anyone liking to speak? Last call. So we'll close the public hearing at 8:24. And is there a motion? Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to make a motion, and I hope somebody seconds it so we can have a conversation. And unlike what is recommended on the board in front of us, I'm going to go back to the motion that was in the packet back in April 2nd that was voted on, and so this wording is right from the same motion from the agenda bill back in April 2nd. And it reads, "I move to adopt ordinance number..."
2846.
2846, vacating a portion of street right-of-way adjacent to property located at 300 and 371 northeast Gilman Boulevard, subject to easements and establishing the compensation to be paid for such vacation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Council discussion. Councilmember Winterstein, would you like to start?
Yeah, thank you. As was pointed out tonight, I appreciated the presentation from staff. Thank you, John. The, there have been two, and now three, public hearings on this, and the council, I reviewed the meeting, the, the comments at those meetings, and the council's comments on, from April 2nd, and I think they've been fairly summarized here, that those of us that were here, those that spoke against the vacation, it was primarily about, we don't know yet, we have time, we don't know if the, the park strategic plan is going to call for some potential use of this land. Councilmember Hunt did make another recommendation about, hey, maybe it could be a linear park or something like that, and, but the majority of the concerns that were expressed were, let's wait to see if the park strategic plan calls for something. Now we know that it does not. And I also do appreciate also staff's comments tonight. I've spent some time out there as well, and when it comes to parks, you know, if there's any, John, can I ask you to go put your second slide back up there? I like parks as much as the next person. I even like linear parks. I spent quite a bit of time. Keep going. One more. If you go southwest from the yellow area, the, on the southwest intersection between Dogwood and Third Avenue, it's hard to tell from this diagram, but the, the North Fork of Issaquah Creek kind of cuts at an angle from southeast to northwest across that property. And there is 105,000 square feet of land owned by the city of Issaquah. Currently, it's occupied by the previous owners, and when they vacate that land, that'll be turning over, and it is within our plan to create a permanent open space to all that land, which is significantly larger than what we're talking about vacating here. I think that's going to be great for the city, it's going to be great for the creek, it's going to be great for everybody who lives in proximity, it's going to be great for the businesses as well. So I think that with that in the pipeline, and given the plenty of opportunity that we've had already at discussing and considering this, I don't think it was necessary to spend any more time on the issue, and I'd like the council to consider just completing this piece of business so we can get one thing off our list.
Great. Anyone else to comment? Councilmember Goodman? Councilmember Hunt?
I agree with Councilmember Winterstein's notion that we could, that we should just approve this tonight. I don't see any reason to refer it to committee. It's been before us before, and I don't know what else we would possibly do at committee that we, there's no more, I mean, we have all the information, and we've seen it a couple times. I too, even though I wasn't at the last meeting, I did watch it when I returned, and so I support the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
I actually like to ask a clarifying question, if I may, regarding the presentation. And it has to do with if there is more information that could be considered. So under the rezoning, my understanding of this part of Gilman is that there are some, also on the consent agenda and a different item, there is a, a item that would consider rezoning for businesses for this part of Gilman, not for a right-of-way, but for the businesses. So would that in any way impact the potential uses if this were to be vacated? I would think it would, which is why I'm asking.
I'm seeing a no being shaken in the back, and it's my understanding that the use of the land would not change. And from what I've read, and I think you guys know better than I, that you guys are talking about impervious area and that kind of thing. So right now, it's zoned for destination retail. The land uses, oh, I'm going to just turn it over to someone who speaks this language.
Good evening, Keith Niven, Director of Development Services. So right now, the property is right-of-way, so it technically doesn't have uses. If it's vacated, the zoning would be consistent with the adjacent property, and what we're talking about is zoning that mixed-use outside of Central Issaquah. So it would, it would adopt that zone.
So that would be contingent on the, the zoning that is currently being considered by council for those properties.
Yes.
Which is, which has not yet been finalized.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thanks. And I was going to look at Councilmember Ramos, because his committee was going to be receiving, and see if we can get some comments.
Sure. And we talked about this in getting ready for the Council Infrastructure Committee meeting, and this idea did get surfaced as a possibility of, did we want to just have the council deal with it directly? And I, my thought at the time was, we have a process we like to follow, which is, after a public hearing, we don't make an immediate decision if we are not time constrained. And since there were a lot of questions asked, and a lot of information coming back, as count, as Chair of that committee, I thought we should go through the regular process, which was, we'd just take it back to committee, and then come back here and do that. So I was respectful of all of the members on the, on the council here in the process to do that, because there's no rush of this to happen at all. So that was my thought process behind why we would continue with the normal process, even though this has been back and forth a couple times because of questions in the beginning. So that tells fellow committee members what, what the thought was.
Thank you. Council President Marts?
So, in general, I strive, both as a council member and as council president, to defer, or at least to look for leadership from the liaison person on the bill, and then in parallel to look for leadership from the chair of the committee to which the bill will be presented. And so the fact that Councilmember Ramos would like to see this come to committee is why I will be voting against the motion that's in, or that... is why I will be voting against the motion that's in, or the motion that Councilmember Winterstein has put forward to decide it this evening.
Thank you. Other comments? That's Member Hunt.
I also will not be supporting the motion because I think that this would be within the purview of the Council Infrastructure Committee. And I think that that has been our process. So I would support the original motion, but not the current motion on the table.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Patisse?
Thank you. I will not be supporting the motion if we don't have a time constraint. I would defer to the head of the Infrastructure Committee.
Comments? Any more comments? Two hands. Kind of a tie? Going to go with Councilmember Ray and then back to Councilmember Winterstein?
I think that we have worked this issue fairly extensively. It's been here before. I don't think that we would find that we would learn much by spending more time in committee and bringing it back. So I am inclined to move forward with making a decision this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, in the case that maybe I've missed something, it was, the comment was made that we got some more information. And I don't know what that is. So if somebody could fill me in, what additional information or additional questions that we still have to address?
That was my comment.
Oh, actually, Bill said that.
You can both reply. We'll start with Councilmember Hunt, and then if Councilmember Ramos would like to join in, that's fine. That's Member Hunt?
Well, I think that it's a question of having a different situation, different context. And I do think that there is, in general, the vacation of a right-of-way would be something that the Infrastructure Committee would discuss. And I think the context has changed since we last discussed it.
Councilmember Ramos?
So again, I was looking mainly at the process and being respectful of that. There is some answers that came definitely from most of our questions. There's another one brought up as far as Director Niven addressed too. We can talk here for about 15 minutes about it, or we can go back to committee for about 15 minutes, come back under consent. So I'm not, it's not a big issue here for me. It's just the process and stick to it unless there's a reason why not to, and that's all.
Councilmember Goodman?
Well, I wasn't completely clear on the answer or the response regarding Councilmember Hunt's question. Is the, if it goes to, if the motion fails and it gets referred to infrastructure, is there a zoning? Is it a zoning question?
There impacts on the answer.
Okay. So then it would, it means that we would need to have somebody there from Development Services too? There's a zoning question with Gilman Boulevard?
So I'll recognize Councilmember Hunt next, but I think what we're trying to get at here tonight is that what is the outstanding question that would go back that would make sense to have the infrastructure meeting because there's some information you don't have tonight to make a decision? And I'll go back to Councilmember Hunt because it was her question about additional information.
I think that was a correct interpretation of what I said.
Well, then, so maybe I'll step into this party that we're having up here, and I'll ask a question. So I tend to agree with Committee Chair Ramos that we have a process and we should stick to it. However, each time we send something to committee, does take council resources in some sort of direction on what information they would be bringing. And if there is an expectation that there is an unanswered question or new information to present, I do think it would be appropriate to go to committee. If the committee chair and those that are here tonight would be hearing exactly what they heard now, I'm not sure that we necessarily have our hands tied. You do have the option to go with a motion to approve tonight if the expectation is there would be nothing new presented at committee. So, for discussion.
Let me address one more thing?
Sure.
Yeah. And I'm just doing the process. I think I was trying to be respectful of council members to not have to have this discussion up here tonight. It looks like we're having it anyway. So, yeah, that was the whole point, to not have to take the time to do this and do that in the regular process. Since we're all talking about it, if you two are just deferring to me because of my decision as Chair, I'm okay with this either way. If you're comfortable with it now, I'm fine with it. I was just, I did not want to sort of the process and say, hey, now, I'm bringing it here. I'm not taking it back to committee. I thought that would have been not proper. You can take it away. I'll follow your suit here.
Thank you for explaining that. Comments? Council President Mertz?
So I just wanted to be clear that I understand. Councilmember Ramos, you now support the motion that is in front of us.
I'll go with majority on this one. I'm fine either way. I mean, seriously, I just, I'm fine either way.
All right. Well, you prefaced your previous comment as if this is, if other council members are deferring to you and I was deferring to you. So I am going to, if you are supportive of this motion, then I am also going to support this motion as the Chair of Infrastructure.
Again, I was respectful of council members' time on the dais here and not trying to change the process without their consent. If you have the consent, you want to change the process, I'm fine with that. If you're comfortable with the information you have, I'm fine with that. That's the decision. I was trying to avoid this long conversation now that we've just had.
Thank you, Chair Ramos. Deputy Council President Patisse?
I was also deferring to the committee chair, so I will support the motion.
And if there are no other comments, I have a clarification that is just going to drive you all crazy. But it was pointed out to me that the motion that was made was in reference to...
Different A B.
The motion is to adopt the proposed ordinance in the Agenda Packet. The title and content of the ordinance differs slightly from the ordinance before council previously in April. Motion that could be considered this evening would be to adopt ordinance number 2846, "vacating a portion of street right-of-way adjacent to property located at 300 and 371 Northeast Gilman Boulevard, subject to easements and establishing the compensation to be paid for such vacation." It shows, sorry to give me the nod. That works?
Yes, that's not the exact title, but as long as it's clear that the intent is to adopt the version of the ordinance in tonight's council packet, there was a slight technical correction made.
So I could hand this down to the motion maker?
So that is, those were the exact same words of my motion, and absolutely the intent is the... All I was citing was the language of the motion from the previous packet, applying it to tonight and the version of the ordinance that's in tonight's packet, for clarity.
Thank you.
So the wording hasn't changed at all? This is the same wording?
Yeah, I think we'll just, it does not need to be exactly what's in the packet now that that clarification has been made, that that's the intention.
So which one am I reading back?
Back to her.
I wasn't sure if you had to read that in or not. There we go. It's a little show tonight. "The motion is moved to adopt ordinance number 2846, 'vacating a portion of street right-of-way adjacent to property located at 300 and 371 Northeast Gilman Boulevard, subject to easements and establishing the compensation to be paid for such vacation.'" All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries six in favor and Councilmember Hunt opposed. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to regular business, the next item on the agenda is AB 7640, "amending school impact fees", looking for some direction to the administration this evening. And then it will be referred to Council Services and Safety Committee. So before this Agenda Bill presentation starts, I'd like to clarify that the purpose of tonight's proposed action is to provide direction to the administration based on the recommendation of the Council Services and Safety Committee. This will give the administration a starting point and allows us to prepare the legislation needed to make changes to the fees or the parameters around setting those fees. Tonight's action does not obligate council members to support a particular fee or approach. Council will have all the usual options to amend and vote on any proposed legislation when this item returns to council for decision. So unless there are any questions, I'd like to invite Policy Planning Manager Trish Heinonen to make a presentation. All good? Trish?
Ready? Okay. We're just going to quick give you a background of why we're here tonight so that you can all talk amongst yourselves. You're seeing the impact fee update again tonight. Just as a background, we've been doing this since 1995. Not this particular one, although there are moments. All the way up until 2016, we've always gone with what the district has recommended in their six-year capital plan. Last year, you expressed some concern that they were taking a double discount beyond, a discount beyond what King County's formula sets. And so you let them know that you had some concerns and you had some discussions with them. And you ended up adopting the fee as established in the capital plan of the school district. But you had expressed that you wanted to work it out this year and get more understanding of why the school district is doing the double discount. So fast forward to this year, when the school board came out with their six-year plan, they took a smaller discount than they did last year. And they said it was in response to you all having a concern about the second discount. You all had talked with them about that. And when we talked to the attorney about if there was ways that you all could adopt a different fee than the school district sets in their capital plan, the attorney says that we have to change our ordinance to do that. And so remember that because that's going to come up again. And so our Agenda Bill, when it originally came to you so many months ago, says that that's an option, is to change our code so that you all can have more flexibility in approving an impact fee for schools. In September, once Services and Safety met with the district representatives, they ended up with two recommendations coming back to you all tonight. And those two, trying to paraphrase, was, ends up to be two ordinances. One, that would allow you all to have flexibilities to set the fees higher or lower, should you decide, then stated in the school district's six-year capital plan. The second recommendation that came out wanted another ordinance that just wanted the highest fee possible, which would only use the one discount that is in the King County formula. So that would be the 50%. There would be no other discount allowed. That's the second ordinance. And what the Services Committee wanted to do is to bring those both to you tonight to talk about it before you figured out what you should direct the administration to bring you back next time. So are there questions on that?
Questions? Not seeing any questions, Trish. Thank you. Hang around. Sorry, Councilmember Ramos has questions.
So just because we have another options here, I just want to make sure which ones we're looking at.
Okay.
So you have option one, which is alternate, alternate three, and option two, which is option two. So just want to follow suit. Are we looking to have both of those done?
Well, that's up to you all. If you were to direct the administration to draft ordinance one, there would be an Agenda Bill at the next meeting that would be just in time so that the Services Committee would look at both ordinances, if that's what you all direct us to do tonight. Or you could just pick one, and Services would be able to look at one ordinance at their meeting.
So my question is, one is very specific. It shall be always as formula, and there's no chance to change that, no matter what the school district says, no matter what. We would not leave us room for any kind of compromise. Versus one says, we have total control on where we are and what we decide to do on that, pretty much.
Right.
Okay, just clarifying that.
Sure. Councilmember Ray?
Can I give a little report out from Services and Safety?
That's why I caught your eye. I was going to see if there's any general questions, and then I was going to go right to you to start the conversation with your...
Yeah. And, you know, Councilmember Hunt and Deputy President Patisse, please chime in. We had a really good discussion with Isaguac School District about impact fees, why they set them the way they do, how they do funding for all of the new construction, and how they're dealing with growth in the region. We separated this into two questions because it fundamentally had two quite distinct parts. The first was, the IMC is currently written, does not provide city council the authority to do anything other than to accept or reject the impact fees as proposed by the school district. The first question we wrestled with was, should we direct the administration to modify the IMC to give us the flexibility to either set an impact fee higher or lower than what was requested by the school district? And we, as a committee, I believe agreed 3-0 that that was something we wanted to pursue. We also then had a very, this is taking President Mertz's word, robust discussion around what to set the impact fee at. And listening to the public and responding to issues around fairness and current property tax burdens, we discussed whether or not we would like the administration to draft a second ordinance that would, for this particular request from the school district, set the impact fee equal to the King County formula. That's not to say that next year or the following year we would do that, but just in this year. So those are the two things that we've brought forward. On the second question, we did not come down unanimously. Councilmember Hunt and myself believed that we should set the discount, or the impact fees at the King County 50% discount and no more. And Deputy President Patisse was more inclined to go with a number provided by the school district. There are statements?
So if there are no questions, we're in deliberations. So comments, questions, what would you like to discuss? Councilmember Ramos, followed by Deputy Council President Patisse.
So I guess I'm back to you, Councilmember Ray. When we first last talked about this with the school district, they had some very strong feelings about some of these actions here. And I'm not hearing that they're having strong feelings now. Could you give me a little bit more on their position on this? Because one of these locks us into, whatever they figure out, it doesn't matter. We're going to go with the highest possible number, which is, you say we can change it next year, which I guess is true, but you put that into IMC. It's in IMC. If we don't change it, we're going to do that forever, which means we're not going to listen to them, no matter what they do. So that's, that kind of sets up something that I'm not so sure we want to have some conversations around.
Question, Claire?
Better follow that.
I'm not sure, and please help me, but I was not under the impression that by establishing the impact fee, that's a change to the municipal code?
Yes.
Okay. So we can adopt, well, we're going to, we're going to change the municipal code anyway because we're going to adopt a different rate than we had last year. So we're either going to respond to the change with the IMC at a rate that is different than last year because that's what was requested by the school district, and/or something higher than that. But it's going to change, and it's going to be IMC one way or the other.
Right. So I guess I had, can I clarify my question? Because I had two questions in there that weren't answered.
Sure, yep. Well, I'll come back to you, Councilmember Ramos, but just looking at Trish to see if, how it was explained by Councilmember Ray is actually how the ordinances will work. There's an ordinance anyway.
Yes, because you will have to change the impact fees unless you want to keep last year's impact fees. And that's in the same section of IMC 3.63 that the impact fees also reside.
Okay, great. Councilmember Ramos, what was your second question in there?
So there's two questions. One is a better feeling for how Isaguac School District is, I mean, talking with us about this. Because, you know, a year ago, this was a robust discussion, and I'm not hearing anything currently about a robust discussion with ISD. So I'm trying to get a feel for where they are because one of these ordinances sets us up almost always in conflict with ISD versus coordinating with them. This is the way. And you're shaking your head, but...
So I've got a list of people who want to speak tonight. So I think what I would do, Councilmember Ramos, rather than have Councilmember Ray speak for the school district, make sure that we have an opportunity to get that input for you, tonight or in the future. I see you, Paul. I've got Councilmember Patisse, followed by Hunt, followed by Winterstein, and then I saw Goodman just stick your hand up as well. So we are on to Councilmember Patisse.
So just to follow up on Councilmember Ray's overview, when we were talking at... at Services and Safety, we really boiled this down into two separate areas. And I guess I was under the impression, as we were coming forward, we first would be talking about the ability to, to allow the council the flexibility to set the impact fees higher or lower. And that is something that I agreed with and voted for. I think that we should have that capability on council to have that robust discussion and be able to, to make those decisions as we go forward. And without the change to the ordinance, we can't do that. I guess I, I think I was under the impression we would talk about that first, and then that, the, the second piece of that would be sort of the next step and another discussion as opposed to everything coming forward right now. So I will speak to, I was a dissenting vote on, on the second, the second item there. And I just wanted to start by saying, I fully understand the need and the want to have the full impact fees, and I want to have a conversation around that. But I did feel that the fees for this year, that having a conversation about it would offer a slower-moving pathway, that it would allow the schools, the school district to actually adjust to this. I felt uncomfortable at the time, and I really, really am still thinking about this. So I just want to be clear on why I came out on a little bit of a different pathway than my fellow council members, but that they are, how they're dealing with their capital budget and moving forward, at least when we're looking at having a good partnership, that we would give them the time to adjust to this. And I will speak a little bit, I feel like it was a really robust conversation last year, and I didn't, I guess I didn't hear as much of that this year. And, and that really led me down the pathway of saying, with number one, that we, we should have the capability to, to look at both sides of this and have a, and have a good conversation about it. So I hope that helps a little bit.
Thank you. And I'll go to Councilmember Hunt next.
I was just going to say that I also considered them very much separate. The first one allows us the flexibility to set the impact fees higher or lower, which would be required regardless of whether we choose to do that or not. And then the second one would be making the change. And we talked about them separately in our Services and Safety meeting, and I think it would probably, I would think that it would facilitate our conversation to separate them in this discussion as well.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah. I was getting confused by some of what I heard. I wasn't sure we were all on the same page. So let me, let me say what I, what I understand this. I'm just going to repeat what you just said. The first one is very clear. We have an existing IMC that says we're supposed to do something. This is giving us latitude going forward to whatever we want to do. Second one is, okay, now let's set next year's fee, just next year's fee. It doesn't, it does, it's not counter to, but it would be working within the spirit of what we are allowing ourselves to do in number one. So they're not either or. And I thought maybe there was an understanding, thinking that maybe that's the way that they were. So I just wanted, I wanted to make that clear. So having said that, we actually don't have a motion on the floor. And, and, you know, I would really, I'll do it, I wasn't there, but boy, I think we should present.
I got a couple, I got a couple more suggestions. While there isn't, we didn't set this up as a co-presentation tonight, the school administration is here and would come and provide some comments if the council thinks that's a good idea tonight, because we're talking about them like they're not even here. So that's a possibility. And then allow for questions, and then see if somebody would like to propose a motion. Generally. Okay. And I would like to invite the reps from the school district to come up. Thank you for coming tonight. It would be helpful for you to introduce yourself before you begin your comments. And I believe what the council questions tonight were about the differences between how does the school district feel about the information that's being presented tonight, because there was a very robust conversation last year as well.
Thank you very much. I'm Ann Moore, current president of the Issaquah School Board. Thank you for having this conversation around our impact fees. The Issaquah School District sets the impact fees through our capital facilities plan. The capital facilities plan looks at our facility needs throughout the entire district, which includes space in the city of Bellevue, the city of Renton, the city of Issaquah, the city of Semamish. Who am I missing? Newcastle, thank you. I had them written down so I wouldn't forget, and King County. So we have to take into account our student needs across all of those jurisdictions. And we create one capital facility plan with one set of numbers for impact fees. We adjust the impact fees at a minimum, the 50% discount is the local share versus the developer share. We did do an additional discount after we had passed our 2016 bond, because the rate of the impact fees went up significantly after we had to take into account the land and the construction of schools that were a result of the passage of the bond. And so that's where you see the start of the additional discount. And part of that was simply to avoid massive spikes in the impact fees, because had we not done a reduction, the single-family impact fee would have gone up by 185%, and the multifamily fee would have gone up by 159%. So over time, and after our discussion with you folks, really looked at, could we reduce it? And so what we've done is tried to smooth it a bit. And so although we had the higher reduction or discount for a couple of years, we reduced the amount we had as far as a discount. Again, had we not done the additional discount that we did do this year, the single-family fee would have gone up 118%, and the multifamily fee 59%. And up until our discussion with all of you, the only feedback we've gotten from cities is reduce the fees. Your fees are too high. We don't want your fees, right? We're going to superimpose upon you and reduce the fees. So never anywhere had we ever seen anyone that suggested the fee should be higher. And we wanted our fees to be passed by the cities. And again, it has happened in the past that if we come forward with fees, they wouldn't necessarily adopt them, or they would reduce them, right? So that's where we were coming from with the fees. The other part I would share with you is that we go through the creation of the capital facilities plan in the April-May time is where it becomes public and goes out before the board to actually adopt it. It usually comes before the board in two meetings, one where we discuss it and one where we adopt it. And that would actually be the perfect time for any of you to come and give us feedback on this plan before we actually adopt it and send it forward to King County. It's the last cycle is where it actually comes back to you as cities to have the ordinance to collect the fees for us. So we would encourage your input at that time as well. And those are the parts I was trying to hit on as far as your questions. I don't know, Steve?
Steve Crawford, Director of Capital Projects for Issaquah School District. As Ann mentioned, we tried to moderate the amount of increase. It's pretty significant. And school districts' impact fees fluctuate considerably over time as to whether or not you have a capital program in place and the bond money to fund those new projects. And when you run to the end of that bond program and you're not building anything new, you don't have projects, and the costs for the land and the cost for the building go down, and the impact fee goes way down. That balancing act also relates to the fact that the homebuilding industry is opposed to impact fees. They're out there lobbying continuously to moderate things. Snohomish County has allowed the builders to vest the impact fee at the time of development application and gives them a five-year window that that holds for. I can see developers are going to rush out in that five-year window and drop, when rates drop, knowing that they've got five years. And then they don't have to pay now until building permit, and in some jurisdictions, they only have to pay half a building permit and half when they close on the project. So it's years and years, and the actual funding that's available to the districts has been delayed further and further out so that the funding's not there when you actually need it. So it's a balancing act between the rate of increase, the total, and trying to maintain the ability to collect impact fees. And as Ann mentioned, in the past, it's always been reductions. Again, Snohomish County held north shore to a $7,000 limit that they just increased this year to the full requested $10,000. We're number two in King County with the rate that we suggested. If, at a 50% rate, we'll be by far the number one. And King County Council took up the issue of impact fees being too high at the last, in at last year's submittal of the rates we all submit. We all go through the King County Schools Technical Review Committee, which ends up going to King County Council. They set up a committee last year to review impact fees because federal way impact fee for multifamily was listed as $19,000. They thought that was just ridiculously high.
So Steve, I'm going to step in here a little bit, because we're sort of turning into a committee meeting a little bit. I would like you guys to stay up there for one second. What I'd like to talk with the council about tonight is you probably have heard some new information that might likely have been passed on to council at the committee level. The question I'm trying to get at is the one that Councilmember Ramos asked specifically, which was last year, the school district, when they came to talk to council and committee, talked about not supporting the increase. And then the committee report out to council this evening said this didn't seem to be as big of issue this year. Is it? Why or why not? And I think that is, if I'm looking for a nod and he's giving it, I think that's what Councilmember Ramos would like to hear.
And I would say it's a lot of what Steve said. It's really up to you. If you, if you want to raise the impact fees, I guess that is what a city can do. What we're saying is, what we recognize is, given the environment of King County, the higher these fees are, the riskier it is that King County takes action to eliminate or reduce our fees.
Okay. Does that get at your question that you had earlier?
Sure. Can I ask one more, clarifying one?
Yeah, I think what would be great is to stay on the topic of what's before us tonight, which is the two motions. So I, really, what I'm worried about is turning this discussion on two motions into a discussion on impact fees. And so if it's germane to the motions that are on the table, and the school district being in a different position or the same position as last year, yes, you can ask a question on that.
Okay. So last year, the robust discussion, there was a whole lot of folks from school board and school staff that came here when we had this discussion about the amount of the impact fee. So there was a lot of, you know, robust discussion, as we're referring to now. So now there, you're here, and what I'm hearing from you is, you're okay with whatever we do, versus, the message I got very loud and clear last year was, you did not want us to do anything but what you recommended. And, and that was a hard discussion to have because of our feelings. So I want to clarify is, you're okay with whatever the council decides? That's, that's bottom line, yes or no, I guess?
And the other option for Councilmember Ramos as well is to just make sure, when this goes back to committee, that the school district is aware of that question and has the time to prepare an answer. So we're not putting the head of the school board answering for her board without having checked with them. So we could note the question, allow them to prepare a response for infrastructure, services, so it could be shared with everyone. And if we're good with that, I can let them sit back down, and I can continue with questions. And then I believe Councilmember Winterstein said he's ready to make a motion.
It wasn't. I was urging somebody--
Oh, somebody to make a motion. Okay, gotcha.
Somebody would like to make a motion.
Yep, yep. I've got some questions. Yep, gotcha. Councilmember Goodman had her hand up? Nope. Council President Martz.
I want to, I want to ask Trish again. I'm not sure I understood. There seems like there was a question about whether, if we were to go with the district's recommendation, whether there would necessarily, I thought I heard you say something to the effect of we would need to have an IMC change. Anyhow, I don't believe that's the case. I believe we don't need an IMC change if we are going to go with the district's recommendation.
It's not as much a change as we change the numbers from last year and put in the new numbers from this year.
In the IMC?
In the IMC. So it's in 3.6. It's in the school impact fee.
So I went and looked at 363, and I don't see anything that changed in 2017. There's very, there's language that basically says that you pass through the districts, that there's a rate schedule is developed, and you pass through that rate schedule. But it tracks when changes occur, and I don't see any changes in 2017.
So going to, going to go to call a friend? We're going to head over to City Clerk and City Administrator here to get an answer on, does it require a change to the IMC?
The IMC, that's school impact fees, it does, because we, that's where we adopt, we would put the new fees.
Fees aren't listed in the IMC.
In the IMC?
They refer to that the district should develop a rate schedule, and then it says that we pass through that, that rate schedule.
I think our legal counsel would like--
It says both that, but also, Section 3.63.100 of subsection A of the IMC says, "Impact fees shall be imposed upon development activity in the city as follows: $8,762 per single-family residential unit and $3,461 per multifamily residential unit."
Getting head nods all around.
So it's, it's right in the code.
I apologize. Indeed, it is. It's in a section, and I, I stand corrected.
I was like, where else could it be? Looking for more questions, not seeing anything. I might have somebody who would make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
I just want one clarification from the clerk. We'll be dealing with these directions one at a time.
Let's take them one at a time. Let's make a motion and then maybe another motion.
Great.
So I'm going to move to direct the administration to draft an agenda bill and ordinance proposing an amendment to the Issaquah Municipal Code to allow the city council to have discretion to adopt school impact fees higher or lower than proposed by the Issaquah School District Capital Facilities Plan, returning to the council at the November 5, 2018 council meeting for referral to the Council Services and Safety Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. It's member Ray.
So this is, this is the first part of this, and this says, "Let's change the IMC to give us the ability to raise fees or to lower fees in the future," because right now, we don't have that flexibility. So it doesn't say we have to do it, doesn't have to say we have to go up or down, but this ordinance and IMC change would give us that flexibility, which I think would be a powerful tool to have in the future.
Thank you. Council President Martz.
So unfortunately, I'm going to oppose this motion. This is not our money. This is, we are collecting it on the behest of the school district. The school district is a body of publicly-elected officials like ourselves. They have to balance the needs of their constituents against a funding challenge that is so much harder than our own because of the Byzantine nature of state education funding. I feel like this is a very small dollar amount. No one has shown that the difference between what we would collect and what they would want to collect would have a potential impact on anybody. We've seen that the amount that they would want to collect represents .5, half of 1% of the capital outlay that they normally do. So it's a, it's a small amount of money, and I feel like if the situation were reversed and they were collecting money on our behest, and we had come to an intelligent decision about why we wanted to do what we would do, I, I don't think we would want to have to justify ourselves to them. And so I think that, for that reason, I'm going to oppose this measure this evening.
And for, oh, Councilmember Goodman, Councilmember Winterstein.
I'm going to support the motion just for the very reason that it provides flexibility. It doesn't, it doesn't require us to do anything, but it provides flexibility, and that's the reason I support it.
Councilmember Winterstein.
I agree with what Stacy said, and I'm going to add something, a perception that's been developing in my mind. As we sit here, and the fees that we calculate for parks, for police, for transportation, I've sat in this room numerous times over the years and gone through the process of trying to understand how we calculate impact fees, what are the state laws governing our, the calculation of impact fees, how they can be used. And I've seen enough from the school district side of things to believe that they're not, they don't have the same set of rules or constraints upon them. they don't have the same set of rules or constraints upon them for their impact fees. In fact, there's something in our packet tonight which is really startling to me. It was an answer to one of the questions, number three, that the committee got an answer to about the question of a calculation of the estimate of receiving $500,000 and on and on and on. The answer goes on, "The school district is very conservative in estimating the amount of impact fees received over a six-year period." And here's the key part for me. By law, the six-year capital budget must be based on, quote, "secured funds," unquote, like the bond that passed in 2016. Since impact fees are not secured, a low amount was established for the six-year capital budget. That tells me that the, if I was budgeting and I had a law that said I must use secured funds for my capital budget, impact fees are one of these things, well, they're available to me, but I cannot plan a significant part of my capital requirements based upon those funds. I have to look at these secured funds. So, so I'm sure there's more to it, but what's very clear is that impact fees have a role and are guided by law for school districts different than what we have here. Now, I could be wrong, and somebody hopefully will come forward and clarify that for me. So all of that is to say that, I think we're having a lot of conversation, but we may be doing it from the wrong basis. We're going from the basis that we understand as a city, and there may be some, there may be different elements actually in effect for school districts. Having said that, for all of the, for the motion that's on the table, I do agree, it gives us flexibility. I do also agree with what Tola had to say, and yet, we've been blessed with some very reasonable leadership at the school district, but who knows what's gonna happen in a couple years, and they might come back with something, and we might really disagree. And now this law would give us that capability. So I'm gonna support the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments before I call for the vote? Council member Ramos.
Yes, at our last discussion a year ago, I was kinda mentioned something similar to council president, is that I didn't want to direct another entity on how to do their business, and I went along with that last year. My question is, as you present, is your capital program is, you've come up with 100% of the cost of the program, the school district has. And then they split that out by shares of new development versus existing development. So the way I feel is if you don't, King County says half goes to future development, half to existing folks. If you change that proportion, then you're asking the existing folks to pay more than their half, their share, for development, which is what part that bothers me. That means those of us that live here have to continue to pay an increased part of the share for the impact of others. So if you take less than that, only that 50% discount, then that bill shifts to us. Because you have the 100% of a budget, your cost is not going down, it's still there, someone's gonna pay that cost. And who is? And it already splits it now, half and half, between existing residents and future residents, and I think that's a fair split. And as you look at that, that ability to change that, I'm gonna have to go with that flexibility for us to look at that more closely, because I don't want to have to explain that to someone on the street, why I just said you have to pay more than the future resident for the impact. That I'd have a hard time explaining. So I'm gonna support this.
Thank you. Other comments before we call for the vote? Deputy council president Patisse.
So after going through everything that we had talked through in the past years regarding impact fees, I did really appreciate the robust conversation that we had at services. And as we start to run through this and better understand what, as a council, we would like to do, but keeping everything in mind, including what council president Mertz has talked about and what we've heard from our partners on the school board, having the flexibility to be able to maneuver and make decisions on this council, I think is important. So for that reason, and because of the flexibility, I'll support the motion.
Additional comments? Nobody's hand up. I'll read the motion again. It is to direct the administration to draft an agenda bill and ordinance proposing an amendment to the Issaquah Municipal Code to allow the city council to have discretion to adopt school impact fees higher or lower than proposed by the Issaquah School District Capital Facilities Plan, returning to council at the November 5, 2018 council meeting for referral to the council services and safety committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It passes 6 to 1 with council president Mertz in opposition. Is there a second motion?
There is. I'd like to move to refer Agenda Bill 7640 to the November 14, 2018 Services and Safety Committee Meeting with a draft ordinance amending IMC 3.63.100, paren A, close paren, to increase the school impact fees as identified in the Issaquah School District's 2018 Capital Facilities Plan, except only applying a 50% discount required by King County Formula, returning to the full council on December 3, 2018 for a final action.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's member Hunt. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Member A.
Provide a little clarity on the 50%. So it's not 50% of the cost of new construction of school facilities, it's 50% of the percentage of the new construction that is attributable to new people moving into the district. So it's not, we are actually giving a 50% discount to the developers for these impact fees. And so along the lines of where council member Ramos was, that is money that has, will be generated because we need to pay for the new schools because we have growth. And so because the school district has bonding authority, they will be able to collect that money, and it will, it'll translate into increased property taxes for the residents of Issaquah. And so I think it requires some additional discussion. I think sending it back to services and safety for further investigation makes sense, and then bring it back for a final decision on the 3rd of December so that we can make our obligation to, final action on this before the end of the year.
Council president Mertz.
So I will actually support this going to committee because, having said earlier that I believe that committee chairs should have, generally speaking, latitude on bills and how they get routed, I will support it. But I will be looking for a really compelling argument about why we believe we know better about how the district should be funding its capital projects than the district does.
Thank you, council president Mertz. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Council member Winterstein, council member Goodman.
I'll be supporting this as well, and I thought Chris and Bill gave very compelling arguments why the no discount beyond 50%, but we'll wait to decide that issue later, but I will be supporting this motion.
Council member Winterstein.
I'll be supporting the motion as well. I did a little bit of math, and, you know, the difference for a single-family home between 50 and 60% discount is $3,800. And, and I know already that this is kind of a small percentage of the overall capital budget. There, I say all that because there feels like there's a lot of symbolism in this move rather than a practical financial stewardship of public resources. And I hope to avoid symbolic moves. I would much prefer that we take an action that if it is, you know, counter to what the school district has carefully considered and proffered to us, that we have a very sound basis and it not just be symbolism.
Council member Ramos.
Yeah, I just want to clarify again for me that these two motions, the one we just passed and the one we're talking about here, are not decisions. The decision is to send them to committee for further discussion. And then I'm hoping is where they'll have more robust discussions, and that the school district will be there and very involved in explaining how they feel, how they work it all out, and get that good discussion going so that it's clear, so when it comes back, those questions I all have in my mind will get answered. Because there are a lot, like I say, I don't like to tell other people what to do, but at the same time, I don't like to, I like to spread the tax burden out fairly amongst all that are receiving benefits, and explaining that is a good thing to do. So this, this one is a little hard for me because, as I say, we'll get the explanation, but this one gives no leeway. It doesn't give a flexibility like the first one did. This just says you shall, and without consideration of anything. I don't like shalls when we don't need shalls, so I will be supporting this, but definitely looking forward to a lot of good committee work and answers coming forward after that.
Deputy council president Patisse.
I'll, I'll support the motion as presented, so we can go back to services and safety and talk about this again. I, I had already talked about what some of my reservations were, and I would, one of the questions that, that I would like to see answered is to better understand if this were to go forward, how does that impact the school district and their capital budget? And to have some information about that and be able to go back to services and talk this through one more time now that we've gotten a chance to pass this by full council.
Thank you. Any other comments before we go to vote? I'll read the motion again. It is to move to refer AB 7640 to the November 14, 2018 Council Services and Safety Committee Meeting with a draft ordinance amending IMC 3.63.100, paren A, to increase the school impact fees as identified in the Issaquah School District's 2018 Capital Facilities Plan, except only applying the 50% discount required by the King County Formula, returning to the full council on December 3, 2018 for final action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. I would like to thank school board president Ann Moore and Steve Crawford for coming in tonight and taking the time to address the council when there was a question. Thank you very much. Thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is under regular business, item B is now, AB 7661, Proposed Amendments to Central Standards Table 4.3B, Permitted Land Uses. And are we going to start with council member Hunt first, and then, how do you guys want to proceed with this conversation? Council member Hunt.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd move to refer AB 7661, Proposed Amendments to Central Standards Table 4.3B, Permitted Land Uses, to the November 1, 2018 Council Land and Shore Committee to allow the administration the opportunity to address housing density and diversity concerns with prohibiting duplexes, threeplexes, and fourplexes within the urban core and mixed-use zones of central Issaquah, returning to the full council on or before December 17, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Goodman. Council member Hunt, would you like to start the discussion?
Yes. So I'm proposing to have a more in-depth discussion about the residential land uses in the central Issaquah land use table. There were a number of changes that were proposed within the agenda bill. It did go through the Planning Policy Commission, and they had a lot of, a lot of discussion around all of the land uses, including the residential land uses. I think that in particular, I would like to have more discussion around the residential land uses because in the current chain, in the current draft agenda bill, there are changes particularly regarding the use of residential land uses other than multifamily with five or more attached. So primarily, that would likely be apartment buildings. And it would allow the same residential land uses for the urban core and the mixed-use zone. I think that we would benefit from looking at the intent of the different zones as stated within the central Issaquah plan. The intent of the mixed-use zone is stated to be different in terms of the residential density from the urban core, and I don't know that that's reflected within the current land use within the agenda bill, so I think that warrants further discussion. The mixed-use zone currently, the description is that, "The intent of the mixed-use district is to provide mixed-use neighborhoods with Class A office buildings, retail uses, high-quality, medium-density residential development, and existing service businesses. Whereas the urban core, the intent is to provide a dense, vibrant, pedestrian-friendly urban environment. Uses are mixed residential, commercial, and office with active first floors that provide pedestrian interest." And the mixed-use zone is also a very large zone. It's 293 acres relative to the urban core, which is 248 acres, and those may be approximate. But I think that we should look at those, look at the differences, look at how we want to meet those intended land zones, and then the intended zoning. And then also, I would like to have a discussion and have the administration prepare information about how this might line up with our housing strategy. Because the housing strategy, one of the considerations, strategy seven from the Housing Strategy Work Plan is to mitigate or offset the deterrence to condominium construction, and under that, there's a policy consideration. The city should take an interest in its housing, having a composition of both ownership and rental, including in central Issaquah. And then there's also strategy eight, which is incorporate code provisions to increase the potential diversity of housing types built in the city. And they go into detail about how there are, there's sort of a disconnect between the need for housing that's for one- and two-person households and smaller unit types, and then also just a need for variable, different housing types, and also the missing middle housing types. So I think we need to look at that, and I think we need to look at how mixed use would be different in terms of land use from the, from the urban core. So that's why I'm proposing that this go back to land and shore.
Thanks. Council member Goodman.
As chair of land and shore, I fully support that. This is a perfect case for an agenda bill that should be referred back to committee. It's a very interesting new issue that has not been talked about at all, and it's been very thoughtfully raised. And I think that it's important to have that work at the committee level so the committee can be, can be briefed on it and fully discuss it, and then it can come back to council for a decision.
Thank you. Deputy council president Patisse.
I'll be supporting this this evening and would just echo what council, council member Goodman just spoke to. I think that this is something that is new and should come before committee, and I'm glad that it was raised by council member Hunt.
Council president Mertz.
So I will also be supporting it, and again, the concept of the committee chair, I care greatly what they think, even though, as we already know, Stacy's not gonna be there and I get to.
That's right.
But I will ask, I want to make sure that when we see this in committee, I sort of want to reiterate what I've heard earlier in terms of information that should come before the committee. I think of this in terms of, there's urban core, there's mixed use, and sort of cross that with, what does the central Issaquah plan say about these spaces? And also, I want to understand what our growth targets are and sort of how we see the split. And I want to make sure that whatever we do, we do within the spirit of the central Issaquah plan, and we also do within the spirit of the Growth Management Act.
Great. Any more comments? I have a question for the council. I think what I heard from Vicky and both Tola was explaining the difference between these different types of zoning, and then looking at it in terms of the zoning for urban core and mixed use, also doing it in line with growth targets, and lining it up with the housing strategy. I did want to ask one clarifying question, and that is that when you look at these zoning maps, the zoning designations look more like blankets where they cover multiple block areas, and the reality is, not every block builds out the same way. My question, I guess, Tola, is in talking about growth targets and in meeting the intent of central Issaquah plan, I assume you would be expecting staff to come back with some sort of assumptions about buildout because it's not a simple blanket theory. It's going to be, there's a target that mass transit supports and a density that mass transit isn't supported. And how would you get that mix on the valley floor, assuming that you're approving something that's a blanket? However, each parcel may build out not all the same. So I'm assuming that's the kind of linkage you were looking for.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not looking for, and thus, you know, here's a, you know, 3D projection of what this will look like, but it's, you know, we are on track towards a certain amount of development in the valley, and this might nudge it one way or the other, and it would make it still reasonably easy to hit our targets. We think it might. We think it might make it hard to hit our targets. You know, just sort of a broad-level conversation. I don't need a, as you say, block-by-block analysis. I just want to understand. I'm also, as much as, you know, I mentioned the targets, it's as much to me about what the central Issaquah plan says. There was so much public engagement around the central Issaquah plan, and we have learned a lot since we put the original plan in place, and I want to make sure that this is still, that this is moving forward in line with that plan.
Thank you. That helps a lot. I was just picturing your former discussions last year where council was talking about density happening outside of the core and whether or not that was an intended or an unintended consequence, and assuming that the transitions at the edges of central Issaquah are meant to transition into single-family homes, and whether or not you could still meet the density is something that Councilmember Hunt was proposing was true, played out. Thank you. Any other comments? And I will read the motion. Refer AB 7661 Proposed Amendments to Central Standards Table 4.3B Permitted Land Uses to the November 1, 2018 Council Land and Shore Committee to allow the administration the opportunity to address housing density and diversity concerns with prohibiting duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes within the urban core and mixed-use zones of central Issaquah, returning to the full council on or before December 17, 2018. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving on to good of the order, do council members have anything for good of the order? I am going to provide a few upcoming council meeting items. On October 27, there will be a special council meeting at 6:00 p.m. It's a public hearing on the 2019 budget, and it will be on levy and revenue sources. On October 22, there is a council work session at 6:30 p.m. It will be deliberations for the 2019 preliminary budget. On October 23, there'll be a council of the whole meeting at 6:30 p.m. The agenda items include the Wash.I90 Front Street Interchange Justification Report update, Squawk Talis Community Connections, King County Solid Waste Comprehensive Plan. On October 29, there'll be a council work session at 6:30 p.m. Again, deliberations for the 2019 preliminary budget. You'll be very busy this month. And on November 5, at the regular council meeting at 7:00 p.m., agenda items include a public hearing on, guess what, the 2019 preliminary budget and adoption of the 2019 levy and revenue sources. And anyone interested in the complete budget schedule can find it online at isquawawa.gov/2019budget. Executive session. I'm actually going to propose a five-minute break before we move into executive session, so we'll be recessed for five minutes.
I don't even know how you do that.
Well.
Okay, we are back on the air and the next item on our agenda this evening is the executive session. As earlier announced, there will be an executive session held this evening to discuss items related to pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI and property acquisition per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NB. These items are expected to take at least 20 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow an open session. We will now recess into executive session at 9:43.
We are back in open session at 10:24 p.m. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 10:24 p.m.